Good morning, today's Thursday, July 16, 2020. We are here for a work session. As always, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, Catherine, can you please say?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as for all.
Thank you. Alright, we have five discussion items today. The first one is highway. Is Gio here yet? I guess he was on his way. So we're gonna move on to number two until away from arrival. Uh, it's the police June monthly report. Can, uh...
Hot seat.
Good.
Get in it.
That would be more fun.
Good morning, Chief Craggman.
Good morning. How's it going?
Morning. Good.
Good, thank you.
Good.
You?
Well, everybody has a copy of the report.
Have it online.
Yeah, should we have it in retail? So things are looking well. We're getting back up with the numbers where we should be. We're still down now. The only two numbers that were up were basically domestic incidents, which we saw last month also. But the good news is revenues are up, so like an eighteen pound valve. It's positive. Uh, pretty good shape on that front. On the COVID front, not such good shape.
Yes.
Our numbers were up. When I say our numbers, I mean county numbers were up. The last three days, they were up almost a hundred each day. And we were averaging about fifty each day. So that's not a good sign. That means everyone has to double down on what they're doing, and that is wearing a mask, washing their hands, and staying six feet apart. And spread the word, so we're sure of what's up. Last but not least, we look like we're in for some heat this weekend. Starting on Saturday through Tuesday. Uh, temperatures will be in the probably eighties probably. But the heat at the sea will be up between ninety and a hundred.
Geez.
For the worst two days being Sunday and Monday. So everyone knows that we have to try to stay cool, stay out of the sun, drink plenty of fluids, eat plenty of vegetables, protein, so. Spread the word on that too. More information will follow. Um, in the past, we've got extended hours at the beach as far as lifeguarding duties, so we'll be talking to the locations for a while about that.
What about, um, we've also had cooling centers, like at the senior center. Can we do that with COVID or we can't?
Well, yeah, no, that would be the, um, problem as far as bringing people to those people, so.
Even if they were six feet apart?
Yeah, well, it's possible. In the past, not many people have attended or cooled centers when they do open, so I don't think it's that important of a thing.
So about, you might wanna make some sort of announcement that, you know, it'll be first come, first served based on the number of people that we could have in the senior center, but it's a lot of, a lot of our seniors don't have air conditioning, so they, when the temperatures get that hot and they're stuck inside, it's, um, we wouldn't want anything to happen to our seniors.
Oh, for sure. But as I say in the past, that really hasn't happened. We have had cooling centers open, but if one or two people stop down, and it was basically our regular seniors, that's going to have that, that there, so.
Yeah, and we also have to consider the fact that we have to maintain the space becomes an issue. And if somebody comes, comes sick, or doesn't feel well, then we have to disinfect the building, and then everybody who got exposed has to quarantine, so that'd be, you know, there could be a rolling, uh, effect. So we should consider all of those factors in this.
Do something similar like taking temperatures when people come in and things of that nature, and maintaining separation distances, masks, hand sanitizer, something like that.
Yeah, yeah. That's, actually, that's CDC mandates, right? You have to lock everyone in, ID, and that's really part of the reason for that is for contact tracing. So if somebody comes down, you can see who was in the building and, and be able, and, uh, they do have, um, the contact traces, and they're starting to issue summonses if people don't wanna cooperate, and they are following through. It's a very aggressive program, and I've seen some of it in, in, in effect. Recently, there was a, a party with some, uh, uh, young adults, and they refused to talk, answer the phone, and they actually issued warrants on them last week, um, and they're issuing a thousand dollar fines, so. But, uh, Chief, you also, uh, the town issued an assembly permit. I, you wanna talk a little bit about it? About, uh, dine on twenty-five that starts today?
So that was the last time. Dine on twenty-five starts today. Main Street will be closed, very similar to how it was closed for Live On Twenty-Five, from four o'clock, four p.m. to ten p.m. Dine on twenty-five occurs five thirty to nine thirty. They have to make some time to set up, so that's why it's closed at that point.
People need to understand that it's not a mass gathering like Alive On Twenty-Five. This is just, this is no different than a restaurant being open. They're just gonna be able to have more tables outside, or tables outside if they haven't in the past. People are concerned that we're allowing this to happen, and there's gonna be mayhem and people, and that's not the case. It, it's no different than any other night of the week. There's just gonna be, Main Street will be closed, and there'll be some tables on the sidewalks and, in the parking area there of, uh, in the parking in front of the building, so no need to worry. You should, you know, feel free to come down and enjoy a dinner, or, but you gotta make a reservation.
Yeah, that's a good point, Tim. I think the title maybe, dine on twenty-five made people think it was a similar model to Alive On Twenty-Five, which it is not.
Yeah, no, reservations are strongly suggested, so.
Right.
Come down, come down to Main Street and eat dinner.
Right.
Yeah, and nothing-
Outside, with more room, more table room, and more spacious, space.
And, and nothing has changed, and we've put all the protocols in place that you, according to the Department of Health. We have got, received approval. Nothing's really changed, except there's one day that it's gonna be on Main Street. The tables outside are gonna be on Main Street, so. E- everything else, as far as, uh, the safeguards and the New York laws, uh, guidelines remain in effect. Nothing has changed, so.
Is there live music as well? Is there live music as well?
They were talking about-
El band, they talked about the acoustic-
They talked about someone walking around with a guitar or something.
So when you're walking around, wear a mask. When you're seated at your table, then you can-
You go, when you're seated at your table, you don't have to have your mask on to get up to go to the restroom, put your mask back on. You're walking down, Main Street, have a mask on. Masks are effective, so.
And that's something that I think, uh, we'll try to clarify it again, that a lot of people seem confused, is that if you're dining, or you're in a park, or you're at the beach, and you have a, a, a couple, you know, the mother, the father, and two kids, as long as you're a family, you don't need to have a mask. But if you get up to use the bathroom, or you walk into the parking lot, yes, you need a mask. And when you don't have a mask, that's when the six feet, you know, comes into play. So if we're in this room, and we're six feet apart, you don't necessarily need to have a mask. And so a lot of people say, oh, these people at the beach, and, you know, they're really families together. If nobody at the beach, you know, has, has a mask, and we don't make these guidelines. We follow them. And, and the Department of Health and the Center for Disease Control have created these guidelines. So if you see people who may be even walking together, or, you know, and there's nobody around, they're six feet, uh, you know, minimum six feet apart, that's okay. And it seems to be, you know, people are not clear on that, so. Great. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, okay. Moving forward, highway, vehicle purchases, a wish and a request. Gio, you wanna come up? Good morning.
Good morning, Gio. How's highway doing these days?
Excellent.
Good.
Yeah.
A little bit behind on paving, though. We should be caught up next week.
Ooh.
Right.
In that heat.
So there were two resolutions that were up to purchase equipment, and we've decided to put it up for a session. Uh, then what numbers were they? Do you guys-
So the, the last, the last two in the packet? In front of you, there's the last two. You guys pulling up on live. I believe it's twenty-four, it's twenty-four and twenty-five.
Oh, twenty-two, twenty-three. Somebody pulled it from my, from my packet.
It's the last two.
This is what we talked about the last time you were here, right? Just those two trucks, the one eighty-five and the dump truck-
It doesn't have the resolution, it just has a number, twenty-four, twenty-five.
It was the mower and the-
No, it was a budget because we needed to get go, was, uh, it was an old build. Probably a bucket truck we bought two or three years ago, and after we went out to bid, I believe on that one, we were getting a gasoline engine. I'm trying to remember. It was two years ago. And we upgraded it to a diesel, uh, motor, if I'm not mistaken. It was just an extra eight grand, I believe.
Okay, so we are looking to see where the funds are coming from here.
That can probably come out of equipment fund.
Equipment?
Yeah. That was two years ago, so.
Yeah, I did see that, 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 um, the purchase order on it, but because we did not, we didn't, um, through resolution, we didn't, um, create legislation to purchase it. We turned it down until the legislation is created.
Yeah.
Uh, Bill, do you have, um, can you just shed some light on, uh, we're talking about a hundred and thirteen thou, which is actually almost a hundred and fourteen thousand a vehicle, and another one for a hundred and ninety. Can you, do you have the funds for this? Can you shed some light on this, so we can, uh, move forward?
We already adopted the resolutions last time for the mower and for the hundred and twelve thousand, I think it was, right? Bill?
Does, a hu- a hundred and thirteen thousand was adopted. Uh, it's the seven thousand dollars extras that's needed in order to, um, get that fund, I guess, I'm not sure to what extent. Um, I guess when it came in, that was the amount that the resolution was for. But then when, uh, people were able to actually put it in use, it needed more work, or whatever it was that had to change order that had to be made to it. But the change order never came before the board, so that's why it changed order, it's gonna be before the board.
I believe the, probably in part, it was almost seventy-
We approved a hundred and thirteen, you say, on the resolution.
Yeah, it was, I believe, I believe it was the-
So it's for six thousand, the resolution, right?
I think it went from diesel, right, you convert-
It went from gasoline to diesel.
To diesel. It was converted to diesel.
Right.
So we never approved it. That's how you're gonna see this resolution here.
I think we approved the original. He's asking for an increase.
Right, for the seventy-five hundred and fifty-six, yes.
Uh, the other one is a purchase of a bucket truck, which we have it for the first five, uh, resolution going forward. Uh, I don't have a resolution to tell this money out of fund out, but I don't know what he has left in his purchases of equipment, you know, like, what, uh-
What's, what's we talking about, right?
A hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars.
That's, that's not a bucket truck, that's a, uh, stock truck, but, uh, I'm saying that.
So I know he doesn't have a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in his equipment line. I don't know how much he has, but this is probably have to come out of fund balance. I've looked now, seen how much is left in his equipment line, and then, um, but the important goal, how much he needs to get rid of fund balance to purchase that.
Originally, it was supposed to all, what do you talk, come out of, like, that.
Yeah, Marie, we can't hear you, so it's okay. Come up, because Catherine, maybe you wanna go to the end of the table, so we're maintaining separation distance a little bit, and Marie, you're gonna have to go up to the mic. So it's one eighty-seven, nine eighty-seven, under the ton of ice lift contract for two thousand nineteen.
So can I just update the town board? If you recall, the last time the highway superintendent appeared, he had expressed that certain pieces of equipment were a ton of the essence. Those were the mowers, uh, the Davis box, box truck, such that, Bill, you'll have to give the exact number, but I believe what was in the highway department equipment fund was a hundred and twelve?
A hundred and twenty-three.
Okay, and it was that amount of money that the town board said, because the highway superintendent had stated it was kind of the essence, you would approve that, and I highlighted to Teresa, our purchasing agent, that those, uh, specs would be coming to her from highway department, what she, what type of mowers they need. So it's my understanding that that money was, the town board had earmarked for those purchases. I think it was like two or three mowers, and that potter.
Yeah, so, everything, the mowers, the two truck trucks, the, uh, black car truck, mainly had extra money in fund balance to come out of that to take care of it.
Well, no, I know. I just wanted to be clear, though. What the town board agreed to was the fund balance items, it was what was remaining in the fund to be spent for those quote "time-sensitive" purchases.
Yeah, so-
And Teresa, if you, or you-
Who drafted this resolution? Because it, it says, "Resolution to amend authorization for highway department purchase of bucket truck," but it wasn't a purchase of a bucket truck. It was a purchase of the mowers, right?
No, 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 no. So if I could, so then the next part I'll clarify is, so I just wanna be clear. As to the budget, the town board, last time highway superintendent appeared, he expressed time-sensitive purchases, the mowers, et cetera. I believe it was left in the highway equipment line, a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, which this board said, yes, proceed.
Mm-hmm.
Teresa has not made those purchases yet, because she's waiting for the detail regarding those pieces of equipment, and then she'll eat, she'll bid them out accordingly.
Okay.
This bucket truck, the town, the then-town board authorized the purchase in July of eighteen, and in that approval, they said not to exceed a hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. After the resolution to purchase and the purchase, the highway superintendent contacted the vendor and requested a swap-out from gas to diesel, or gas to diesel. And in addition, a long-reach saw and corner strobe, safety lights for the vehicle. He did not come back before the board in order to get that approval, um- And that's why we're here today. And that's why you're here today. So the one thing I have expressed repeatedly, time to time again, and I've expressed to the highway superintendent, especially now, because we have a very qualified and experienced purchasing agent. So all purchases, all change orders, every quote desire of a department for a piece of equipment or a service, really should go through the purchasing agent. She has the expertise of, and she is the one who would have been immediately highlighted, wait a minute, we don't have authorization for this purchase, under the hot provisions of highway law, the town board must approve, and she would have caught it earlier than that. But we did accept the labor, we have the vehicle, and that's why the resolution is not for it. Okay, so that takes care of that. The board will vote today if they wanna move forward. I guess, one, 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 let me just interject over for one second. I did see a resolution, believe it was last year, um, and it said seventy-five thousand dollars for equipment, but nothing was listed. Correct. And how do we know what equipment it would, we need to be a little bit more accountable, especially now that we have the purchasing officer. So that is not a requirement of the town board to do. If the town board chooses, the town board could, under law, authorize, and it's typically at the beginning of each year, five thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars, seventy-five thousand dollar authorization for the highway superintendent to purchase without your approval. However, the caveat is, and the condition and concern always is, that authority only comes with the requirement that all purchasing laws and procedures are complied with. And I'm expressing to this town board, you now have a purchasing agent with expertise. It is, you know, uh, her knowledge and her curriculum vitae really lent itself to actually doing all the purchases. I mean, I've had an opportunity to work with her since she's been hired. Um, she is far better equipped than any department head they go through, uh, including myself, to make purchases, because it's not, the town board, you know, should be aware. It's not enough to say, hey, there's a contract out there, um, you know, for a table, we'll piggyback off. That's not enough. The obligation we have to our taxpayers is, there might be ten contracts we could piggyback off of, and the prices could be significantly different. Teresa's role is to actually research all of those and decide if we're gonna piggyback, which is the best contract to piggyback off of. Can we legally piggyback off of them? Or are we better going out to bid? The, you know, the town board should utilize her in the position you hired her in. Well, I, I, I totally agree, that that should be something that if she does have, you know, the experience, and she can, um, per, you know, lessen up purchase, uh, load, uh, that we should follow that. It just makes sense. Yeah, and the last time I see her, I explained to the town board, all the department head has to do is say, I require X, provide sufficient detail, she will then conduct her due diligence and search.
Well, I'm just gonna speak for Gio, on Gio's behalf. I know pushing snow with, uh, with a, a big sander on, you really need a diesel engine to do that. A gas engine just isn't strong enough to, to, especially for a heavy snowfall.
Exactly.
Which is fine, if he says that's what he needs, then the purchasing agent would go out for bid for that.
That's why I assisted the highway superintendent in preparing this resolution to actually finalize and legalize this purchase. But you make my point that the purchasing agent that we have actually knows the questions to ask of the department head to make it unlikely a change order would be needed, because she would ask the difficult questions, and she would do that back.
Anne Marie, what about, I know Gio buys used vehicles. Will she do that, use then new?
Yes, in every, yes.
Okay.
She has an unbelievable record of experience in all aspects of purchasing. And again, even with used equipment, you know, Teresa and I have worked together and gone back and forth on a lot of various pieces of equipment, different departments have wanted used equipment. I mean, you must do a search, because you're trying to get the best product, the best price, albeit used, so you don't cost the taxpayers extra money, a repair cost, um, a vehicle actually being deemed obsolete two years after you purchase it. Obviously, we look to avoid that, and we always look, Teresa and I have talked about this numerous times, even with used equipment, we look to get a warranty on it as best we can to further insulate the town from additional costs.
So let's say she finds some, Gio asked for, or someone else asked for something, and then she finds something slightly different. She gonna check with the department head, and say, like, hey, this is a little different. Does this work for you?
Her goal, her goal is to accomplish that which the department needs. So the department head should not be spending their time researching, oh, does Malveci have a truck here? Does John Deere have a truck here? Just tell her what you require, and let her do the search. That's what you pay her for. Okay, it seems to me that we're in agreement with that approach.
Mm-hmm.
Just, just on another note, also over the last two years, we've been, we didn't have a purchasing officer for like six months.
Right.
So we take that into, uh, account also. So things got backed up, or did, I don't know, whatever happened.
So this is really just a procedural change, that's all.
Yeah, that's all it is. And, and you're right, there wasn't one, and so now we have someone with expertise who's gonna, you know, help us, and it seems to me like it's a no-brainer. I do know that she has, uh, as Anne Marie said, a huge amount of experience on a county level purchasing, and she does have a lot of connections, and, uh, hopefully she'll save us some money.
The other thing is, I know, I talked to Bill on this, uh, before I purchased, even having money in the fund balance, uh, he would like me to spend the money in my equipment balance first, all going into my fund balance. Uh, last time I was here, I was asking to remove certain amount of money out of fund balance, uh, after purchasing the rest of the equipment needed, a lot of having to pay for it, so.
Okay, so, uh, something that we have to adjust. Bill, did you wanna?
Well, like I said, everything is kinda time-sensitive, so that's kinda what it looks like.
Okay.
Yeah, so you've told the purchasing agent what you need, and she's shopping it out?
As of yet, I, I fully, I can't remind her. That was three months ago when I was here last time.
So Teresa, has it been done with Joe?
I don't think it was.
Okay, no specifications were received?
No.
Okay, so maybe we should start that process?
And I wanna thank you, 'cause I asked for a list by the equipment. Margaret did a great job, so thank you very much, and I'm just looking for the maintenance costs still.
Maintenance will probably damage it because the equipment might have been damaged, so.
Yeah, I've just-
Speed up equipment during snowstorms, uh.
Yeah.
Very little snowy to have me save money, so actually we're redirecting the money into some other phases of equipment that needs work done, so. Uh, we get that at the moment.
But the reason why I think this is important is to take a look at the history of the maintenance. If we're in two thousand nine, we're buying a truck that is a two thousand three, or a nineteen ninety-three truck in two thousand nine, how much money have we spent in maintenance, and would we have been better off just buying it new?
Well, it all depends on when the truck breaks down. A lot of times, um, the one truck I did get was, um, I was replacing a nineteen ninety-nine truck. I found a good deal on a two thousand ten or two thousand eleven, just as an upgrade for now. Um, that's how I worked that. I'm hoping within the next year or so, um, to have all my equip, uh, equipment completely upgraded, so therefore, purchasing equipment won't be a major of a deal, um, in the next year or so.
Right.
So we should be all at the park, and just make maintenance of the stuff we have taken care of.
So any upgrades would also go through the purchasing officer?
Yes.
Oh, from now on? Great, that's perfect.
As far as purchasing, that, the one truck I got from, I actually had one, too. Um, trucks from Shelter Island. We bought those new, probably two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, I saved the taxpayers, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I got it for like forty grand. Um, it all depends on when a truck breaks down, um, when you need it. It, it's, it's not just saying, I'm gonna go get this. The reason usually behind it.
Okay, great.
And actually, it was Joan Modern that did this for me, so tell her thank you.
Yeah, I thought it was Joan.
Bill, did you wanna talk about the transfer of money?
Yes, and right now, there's-
Yes, and right now, there's a hundred and twelve thousand dollars left in the equipment line, and, uh, this vehicle is P eighty-seven, so I would have to do a budget transfer from fund balance to seventy-five thousand dollars.
All right, so-
Where the resolution is, the board, uh, gives me the go-ahead to transfer that from fund balance. Uh, would have to be done same time, because we wouldn't have the funds to do this otherwise. The board would have to pass both resolutions allowing to purchase the vehicle and transfer all the seventy-five thousand from fund balance.
And this is coming up the town advice of contract, so the purchasing agent has already researched that, that that's the best price?
No.
No?
That wasn't put through to her, so maybe we should consider that, and we'll just bring it back up, you know, we'll, uh-
We'll move the total amount into the correct amount, so we can keep it down from fund balance and then let the board know that we did.
Anne Marie?
Bill, I don't wanna confuse the amount. The hundred and twelve that you're talking about-
Here, come up to the mic please, because nobody can hear you.
Stick with us. The hundred and twelve that you're talking about, is that the hundred and twelve that the town board agreed would be spent on the mowers and the box truck?
The, that's the amount in here?
Yes.
Yes, so, the, the, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, that's why I back up here. Bill, that, those monies, last appearance with the highway superintendent, that hundred and twelve the town board authorized for Theresa, remember, the highway superintendent gives her the specs to use for the mowers and the box truck, because those were deemed, um, of the essence. So that hundred and twelve, it's not committed yet because-
Well, it'd go for people, and I might, uh, contain it.
Correct, because Theresa is waiting for the specifications.
Okay, so Gio, you had said last time that that was what you needed right away, were the mowers and the box truck. So now, you're not gonna get the mowers and the box truck with that hundred and twelve thousand, you're gonna put the hundred and twelve thousand towards this? It's confusing.
I'm feeling confused.
It is. The whole, a hundred and twelve thousand dollars originally when I came, it was for the box truck and the mowers.
Yes.
Okay.
Anything outside of that, the two dump trucks, the backhand truck, whatever else I was putting in for, would come out of the fund balance that we had excess number.
Okay, so the, what Bill just said about the hundred and twelve plus the seventy-five, that's not accurate?
And wait, I, what do you think, seven?
That's right. There, there are, there's thirty-two thousand dollars in CO's open, assuming that none of those COs are in issue, then we would need the whole bunch of those for those purchase orders. So that means it's not available to apply for these pieces of equipment, so we have to do a four year-
The hundred and twelve is gone, so you have nothing left in your equipment budget. So these two resolutions are for, from fund balance?
Correct. Yes. Hundred and twelve, hundred and twelve is for the mowers and the box truck. The way I was working it is, anything extra I had in fund balance would take care, we would take money out of that for the two dump trucks, the backhand truck, and something else that was put on the bus. That would come out of fund balance, so we keep everything separate.
So, so one ninety plus the one fourteen is three hundred thousand. That's coming out of fund balance, that's what you're asking?
What's the one fourteen for?
The one fourteen is for the-
No, Joey.
That's, that's just a seven thousand dollar upgrade.
Right. Well, this is from money that he didn't spend in two thousand eighteen. We had a resolution July of two thousand eighteen, and you didn't buy this, so you didn't spend the money in two thousand eighteen, so it-
He spent the hundred and thirteen that was authorized.
Okay.
He did spend that. It was the seven thousand five hundred something dollars upgrade
Five hundred.
Right.
Upgrade, yep.
that wasn't paid for, and it's gonna come out of this year's budget.
So what he needs is the hundred eighty-seven and seventy-five hundred out of fund balance in order to come up with it.
Now, how much more equipment do you anticipate we may need for the rest of the year, Gio?
Uh, let's see, it would be the two mowers, the box truck that's coming out of the hundred and twelve, and then the one dump truck, plow for one eighty-eight. There was another one, I believe, for one seventy, one sixty-five, I can't remember the numbers. Then there was a couple of other vehicles. I'm sure that was a list.
And are, are they going through the purchasing officer? If, if-
I mean, he's gonna go through her, yes.
Okay, great.
Well, first we have to, um, get the money out of fund balance, before I go through all that to give to her. I don't have the money out of fund balance, but I can go.
Right.
Well, we don't know how much it's gonna cost yet, so how much we need to transfer out of fund balance until she puts it out for bid?
I, I, I gave you a list last time I was here, what the total was.
I know, but that didn't go through the purchasing agent. She might be able to get the same-
So it's still the same list?
She might be able to get the same piece of equipment for less, is what I'm saying.
All right, so why don't we start the process?
With the frame liner.
To Anne Marie.
At, at, at a, at a certain point in the end, I, I get, I can't, I don't understand how, I put in for a piece of equipment, I usually learn my homework on the best way to get it for the price, so I don't get what you're trying to say. She's gonna contradict what I'm trying to buy now? I, I don't get it.
I think we all just agreed that everything has to go through the purchasing agent, so that-
It, it does, but in the end, I make the final decision. She tells me how to go about it, but I get what I need.
Well, of course, what you need, a, and then you identify it. She gets you the best price, and then she comes back to you.
I, yeah.
She's the best.
Yeah, but she may, she may not understand, I explained last time I was here, I have trucks for Town Riverhead, I have trucks for, uh, Little Road area, I have trucks for Sound Avenue, so all the trucks, they're all different prices and sizes.
Right, it's like buying a car.
So, a truck that I get from Little Road, she might think, well, why don't you get this one for one seventy-five?
If you provided the specs to her, it shouldn't be an issue. You give her the specs, she's gonna look for the specs that you give her.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so. Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that shouldn't be a problem. And then she's gonna get back to you once she finds that out to finalize with you before-
Usually there's no better deal out there. I'm kinda icing it all.
I know you're very good with that.
You get the best truck for the best price for the money.
Think we have a plan. Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, so for this second resolution, Theresa should be tasked with doing the due diligence to determine best price for the vehicle needing these specifications.
Yeah, I mean, Bill, how do we normally do it? If you could come up, I mean, do we normally go out for bid, we figure out what the cost is, and then we transfer it from fund balance to pay for it, correct?
Yeah, but there's multiple ways you can do it. You go out to bid, or jump on a state contract, there's several ways that you can purchase this, and that's what Theresa would do, try to cheat this way with the town board.
Right, but what I'm saying is, Gio's saying he needs it to come out of fund balance on Tuesday at the town board meeting, and I'm saying we should wait until we know what the price is before we move it out of fund balance. Is that how we normally do it, or do we normally estimate?
Yeah, so if this is whatever price is here, if the price is coming in low or high, we need to move more or less out of fund balance.
That makes sense, Joey.
We're to do it again anyway, so you would-
I know, but it's just, it gets too muddy with like all the resolutions. I mean, if we have an exact number that it's gonna cost us, that's what the resolution should be for.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else on this?
So these, these are coming out then, until we get the-
Yes.
Or just the one is coming out?
Just those one.
The seventy-five hundred could be in it.
He already received that, right?
Yes, yeah, he did.
Yeah, the seven thousand, we know that's the price, when we come in that.
Good, okay.
Okay.
That's the price?
Yep.
Okay.
So everything's right, that's great. So we're just making it, uh, creating the legislation to move it forward, and, and that's great. And we'll hold off on the other resolution until we can get a, an exact price, and then we'll move the money?
Good.
Good, perfect. Thank you. All right, moving forward, planning, building and planning, Eastern Wholesale Fence Site Plan application, Murphy and Burkin. Good morning, Jeff. You've been very busy lately, haven't you?
Happened.
Oh, I just wanna make one quick note. Um, actually, very good news on the building department. We have seen proceeds, uh, in excess of what, like a hundred and thirty thousand dollars?
Hundred and thirty-four thousand was last month.
A hundred and thirty-four thousand? That's, uh, very good news that we have coming in from the building department, so things are looking-
Excellent.
Uh, positive. Okay.
Gosh, I can't believe this is still going on.
Yes.
Eastern Wholesale Fence.
I, I promise you, this will be a lot easier than your last discussion I had.
Thank you.
We'll wait and see.
Uh, good morning, everyone. Jefferson Murphy, uh, for the planning department. Uh, attending with today is Roxton Jomsky, architect, um, Peter Williams, Paul Wosnowski, and John Zillo. They should all be joining us as part of this meeting.
Hey, good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
So, uh, as Councilwoman Figueroa pointed out, this is not the first time you've seen this, uh, Frank Freyrock, and I bet this is probably your first time. This is actually one of Karen Glue's, uh, applications, uh, that I'm trying to pick up and try to carry to the finish line on behalf of the applicant. Karen prepared a staff report dated February eighth, two thousand nineteen, and then also a summary of the staff report. So if you don't wanna read the twenty-page staff report, I actually prepared a two-page summary. Uh, this is an application located over at Epcal, over at three oh one Scott Avenue. It's a nine point four two acre site, uh, it's zone industrial A. If you don't know what Eastern Wholesale Fence is, they're a very large, uh, manufacturer of plastic products uh, for the east end of the United States, a very large company. Uh, they are seeking to legalize, uh, some existing structures that they had built on the project without getting the proper permission approval, so they're doing the right things, coming back and wanting to get a C of O, they need a building permit, in order to get a building permit, they need site plan approval from, from, from you. Uh, the, the summary, uh, outlines some of the site plan issues. I'm not gonna go into those today because they submit revised plans, and they've been working diligently since February to address those issues. A lot of those were issues where, uh, question, uh, questions that were answered by the board last year, so they revised the plan. I have not, uh, reviewed, had a chance to review the revisions. Uh, one of the bigger issues I know, for example, was the drainage. Drainage was put in as part of the original Berman development, and then subsequently amended as part of the Berman subdivision. Uh, Vinnie Godiello is a consulting engineer that has been reviewing that issue on behalf of the town, and I know that he has issued a memo uh, recommending his approval on that issue. At this point, uh, we issued a neg debt back in, uh, beginning of this year on the project. Uh, we also approved the Cogen unit, so that that part of the development can go forward and get the building permits and get, uh, a sign off on that. The next step in the process was to schedule a public hearing. It actually was scheduled, but then was canceled due to the COVID. So the purpose of today's presentation is that you have a resolution, you're packing to schedule a public hearing for the August eighteenth town board meeting. And that's where we are today.
Great. Any other comments?
Finally, that's all I'm gonna say, finally.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going forward with this, right?
Absolutely.
Do you agree?
Yes.
Good.
Joey?
Yep.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
I guess, did you have anything else to add to that?
Okay, great.
At this point, you know, like I said, we're just anxious to kinda get this, uh, you know, all of this stuff legalized. It's obviously, everybody that, that's been involved knows it's a long road, so, uh, you know, we've, everything that we can, I think the last, uh, sticking point was the drainage. We worked concurrently with, uh, to try to use much of the existing infrastructure, uh, to alleviate, you know, whatever stormwater issues may arise, and I think we came up with a pretty, uh, pretty good solution, and obviously Vinnie. So, you know, at this point, we're ready to, you know, move on and let these guys, uh, do their business.
And so we'll wait.
And I, and I think that we made decisions on the gatehouse, right, with the, what type of material it was gonna be and what it was gonna look like. We didn't, we weren't looking for anything fancy. I mean, you're on the interior of the industrial park, correct? The ARB?
Uh, I don't know if the ARB really had much to say about the gatehouse. Um, Peter, is that something you're still looking to keep, or what are you gonna be doing with that?
I thought, I thought we had discussed that we can eliminate it if it was a problem the way it was set up now. It, it's just a wood building that we just keep supplies in. As trucks come into the gate, we're able to grab them quick.
Yeah, it's existing, right? I think we said it's fine the last time you appeared before us.
But it's- Yes, but it, it is, it's movable, and it doesn't stay in one spot. We move it around.
Yeah, it's, it's really, uh, it's really just like a small shed that they keep some clipboards and stuff in, uh, in the event when it's raining, but it's, we get rid of it without a problem.
I don't think, I think we just said, I think the last time you came before us last year, it was fun, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it, we name it, you know, the only time you can see is when the gates open, uh, you know, pretty much it's just one of your standard, you know, prefab-built sheds. There's not, you know, at, uh, uh, much, you know, uh-
Cause there was a note in the, in the summary, that's why I just wanted to clarify.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, the last item we have is again, building, planning, Crown Castle cell tower, special-
We actually have one out there, we have that, that's forty-eight chroma.
Tomorrow.
Okay, I, uh, yeah, we're going to forty-eight chroma, go ahead.
That will be, uh, Marty Semluski and I will take off.
Yeah, I think they're coming on virtually.
And then John Zillo is like, uh-
Okay.
Yep. They have a voice, uh, Semluski. Okay.
That should be him.
Should be him. That should be Marty.
Yeah.
You can't even see him.
That's, that's like a-
Marty's like the half a church.
Where's, where's Marty?
Marty.
It's like words Waldorf. I can't control the other side, because-
He's on.
I thought we were gonna take longer.
Chip, is, is his voice on?
What's that?
Sound?
There's no microphone there, so say Marty, you can call that.
You wanna skip ahead to the other one, Jeff? You've got three things.
Yeah, why don't you, like, get Crown Castle on, and I'll call up Marty.
All right, Crown Castle cell tower, special permit application. Great. Good morning. You guys have, uh- Are they unmuted? Okay, good morning.
Good morning.
Can you hear us?
David Kenny, I'm an attorney with Snyder and Snyder. I'm representing the applicant Crown Castle for this application.
Okay, great. Who else do we have?
Uh, we have two representatives from the applicant with us, but they're just needed if any questions, uh, that I can't answer today. Uh, but I believe, you know, I'll be handling the presentation to this board.
Great, okay, um, can we move forward?
Yep, so I'll, I'll go through, I'll go through the project. Um, just for reference, there will be some items in the, in the report that I referenced, such as the, uh, visual assessment, the RF reports, um, some of those items. Those are available in, on the town website. Um, they're under the planning packet, so as you're following along, you can look at some of the visual impacts. Uh, so the planning department has received and reviewed a special permit and site plan application proposing to construct a new one hundred and twenty-foot tall monopole wireless communications tower with associated ground level equipment, which will replace two existing wireless communications facilities which are currently in use in the surrounding area. The two towers to be removed, one is currently a hundred and twenty feet tall, and one is a hundred and twenty-two feet tall. Uh, this application is unique in terms of cell tower applications that the board has reviewed, in that approval of this application will effectively reduce the number of towers in the town by one. Uh, the subject parcel identified as Suffolk County Tax Map Number six hundred dash seventy-seven dash two dash two is a zero point nine nine acre parcel of land which is located on the east side of Fresh Pond Avenue, approximately thirty-nine hundred feet north of the intersection of Fresh Pond Avenue and Middle Country Road. Uh, the subject site is located within, within the Agricultural Protection Zoning Use District, which permits a wireless communications facility by special permit of the town board. Um, in terms of SECR, the proposed action is a type one action pursuant to SECR uh, and Town Code Section two fifty-five dash eleven B four, which requires mandatory coordinated review among involved agencies. Um, the identified, the agencies identified as being involved in the application would be the Riverhead Planning Board, the Town Highway Department, the Riverhead Zoning Board of Appeals, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, uh, and then potentially the Suffolk County Department of Health Services, pending clarification on some items in this report, as well as PSENG. Um, planning staff does have some concerns about the current conditions of the site. Uh, during a site visit conducted on July first of this year, there were a number, number of piles of material and some heavy construction vehicles which were present on the site. Uh, those can be seen in figures three, four, and five on my staff report. Um, the property is currently owned by Lawler Garden Center and Stone Incorporated. However, records maintained by the building and planning departments show no records of any site plan approval or use permits on the- of any site plan approval or use permits on the subject property. I did review some historical aerials on Suffolk County GIS, and it does appear as though some of the clearing and use of the property was established sometime between nineteen-sixty-two and nineteen-seventy-eight. Staff recommends that the applicant prepare a map which clearly identifies each material pile which is present on site, provides calculations as to the amount of materials which are present on those piles, as well as conducting some soil and material sampling to determine if there's any deleterious material which is present on site. Sampling and testing must be done in accordance with the following requirements. Soil sample collection shall be conducted under an onsite supervision by a member of the Town of Riverhead Planning Department. Laboratory analysis of soil samples to be conducted by a New York State Department of Health-certified lab with analysis performed in accordance with New York State DEC Part 375 standards, and the applicant must provide a chain of custody form for the material samples. Upon review and submission of the test results and related information, staff recommends that the findings be discussed with the Town Attorney's Office and the New York State DEC to determine if there's any remediation efforts that are necessary. The applicant will also be required to identify a plan for the removal of materials, and this must be handled in accordance with any New York State DEC requirements. Prior to the granting of a special permit, if the Town Board agrees, the applicant must demonstrate their ability and authority to dismantle the two existing towers. For example, establish ownership of the tower, establish agreements and understandings from any and all current leaseholders that they have authorized them to remove this tower in a form approved by the Town Attorney. The timing of the removal of the towers must also be clarified. It's assumed that they're going to want to build the first tower, get it operational, and then remove the two existing towers to ensure that there's coverage. Staff would recommend, however, that the issuance of a certificate of occupancy on the new tower be conditioned that it would only, they would only get the CO upon removal of the two existing towers. Approval of the application will require relief from the Zoning Board of Appeals as the proposed property line setbacks, which are eighty-one-point-one feet and seventy-two, I'm sorry, seventy-two feet eleven inches. They do not comply with the setback requirements within the Wireless Town Code, which states that towers shall be set back at a distance equal to at least a hundred percent of the tower height. In order to comply, they would need to provide a hundred-and-twenty feet. They have not done that, so they will require ZBA relief. In terms of the special use requirements, the applicant has provided a signed and notarized statement that states that the Crown Castle facility shall rent or lease space available for co-location of the facility. And they also did provide a separation map, which details the separation distances between towers. They did provide the RF report dated February 18th, 2020, which identifies four existing Crown Castle sites within the twenty-five-thousand-foot radius. Two of them on Fresh Pond, which are the two to be removed. There is one on Middle Country Road and Wading River, and there's one on Edwards Avenue in Calverton. The applicant has submitted a visual assessment of the proposed wireless tower, which was prepared by Virtual Site Simulations LLC, with a balloon test conducted on December 12th, 2019. The report used field reconnaissance photographs. Basically, what the applicants do is they float a red balloon at the site of the tower, they then photograph that balloon, and then they kind of superimpose a rendering of what the tower would look like. I do note that in the visual render, visual renderings, the tower would be visible year-round from location numbers two, three, four, seven, ten, and seventeen. However, the overall visual impacts are minor. The only residential area from which the tower would be visible is shown in location number ten, where the tower is minimally visual, visible above an existing tree line. It is worth noting in location number seventeen in that visual assessment report, it does show the reduction in the visual impacts, because that image clearly shows the two existing towers, and then what the tower would, you know, what the visual impacts from the single tower would be. The applicant has prepared a radio frequency analysis report, which analyzed the RF, the radio frequency levels from the three proposed carriers, which are Verizon Wireless, AT&amp;T, and Sprint. And those numbers and those radio frequencies were analyzed in relation to the maximum permissible exposure levels, which are established by the Federal Communications Commission. The report, which was signed and sealed by Paul Duggan, professional engineer, demonstrates that the maximum potential exposure at the ground level of the site will be six-point-two-five-two percent of the maximum permitted exposure, or roughly sixteen times below what's permitted by federal guidelines. I do note that the staff, the report only analyzed three carriers, while the site plan shows four separate carrier sections on the tower. It's staff recommendation that the applicant must, in their, an amended RF report, analyze the radio frequency from four potential carriers on the site. Although it's still well below the guidelines in its current, current form, it wouldn't be expected to exceed the levels. They still need to demonstrate the RF potential from the four carriers. They did provide a radio frequency coverage analysis, which analyzed existing and proposed wireless coverage from the consolidation of the towers. There is one, there is a gap where there will be some reduction in cell service, and that is in the vicinity of Epcal.
So, go ahead, I'll ask a question.
All right. Town code requires the applicant to address the availability of suitable existing towers, other structures, or alternative technologies. Town code does allow the Town Board to waive some of the requirements of this section. The applicant has requested a waiver from this section. They've given the following reasons, that telephone poles in the area are too low to effectively use smaller microcell technology, which are those kind of garbage can-looking things that they mount on telephone poles, as they would be obscured by existing tree lines. And then, the applicant does propose to remove two existing towers in the surrounding area to consolidate operations onto this one location, so they are asking for a waiver, bless you, for a more extensive analysis of the alternative technologies. The applicant did provide a letter signed by a professional engineer, which states that the structure has been designed in accordance with the Telecommunications Industry Association standards. It is noted, though, that the site plan does not include any soil borings to determine suitability of subsurface conditions. This is information that's going to need to be required for building permits, structural analysis. So, prior to the issuance of any special permit, staff recommends that they perform those soil borings and provide, you know, foundation plans, anchoring plans, whatever, what it may be, to ensure that the tower is structurally sound. Town code requires an eight-foot security fencing with appropriate anti-climbing devices. Site plan currently proposes an eight-foot chain-link fence around the site, but it does not include any barbed wire or anything like that. Town Board needs to make a decision if they would require that. Based on the location of the site, it's not really in a highly trafficked area. I'm not really, I wouldn't think that it would be much of a concern, but Board can weigh in on that. There are requirements from landscaping that require tower facilities to be screened from residential, screened from view from residential properties. There is one single-family residence which is located directly to the north of the subject property. There is some existing vegetation on the site of the cell tower, as well as an existing vegetative buffer on the residential parcel. Application will require some clearing of the trees on the subject parcel. However, it appears as though it would leave a buffer of approximately sixty-five to seventy feet on the cell tower parcel. When you include the existing vegetative buffer on the residential parcel, it's about a hundred-and-thirty feet from the neighboring residence to the facility. One feature typical of wireless communications facilities is the presence of backup generators in the event of power failure. The site plan does not currently provide any details of the ground-mounted communications equipment. The applicant does need to clarify this, as there may be some health department approvals that are required for the storage of diesel fuel. I've done a little bit of research, and I believe the threshold is eleven-hundred gallons. So, that's just something that the applicant will need to clarify in terms of their ground equipment. The application does not require any analysis or permits from the FAA, as they've done an analysis. If they were to build a tower that's two-hundred feet tall, that's when it would trigger necessary approvals from the FAA. The applicant will require a Town of Riverhead Highway permit for a new curb cut. It is not within any archaeologically sensitive areas, so the State Office of Historic Preservation does not come into play. Again, we're going to coordinate with the DEC just because of the presence of the material piles on site. So, to wrap up the recommendations, I'll just recap quickly. The applicant needs to identify the need for standby generators. If there are generators proposed, they need to clarify the type of noise attenuation to not disturb the residents to the north. They need to clarify the number of carriers that will be on the site, amend the radio frequency analysis to incorporate the fourth potential carrier. They need to establish the ownership and authority to remove the existing towers, perform the soil samplings, and then the soil borings to determine suitability for structure. So, the next steps for the board, obviously, we'll get through any questions, but the next step would be to initiate the thirty-day SECR coordination process. I have not put that resolution into Minitrack, but that, I can have that done quickly by the end of the day, so that the Board can vote on it at the upcoming meeting.
Would there be an opportunity for, eventually for our EMS or our police to use this tower?
Absolutely. We'd be willing to speak with whoever handles the emergency services communication for the town and speak with them to see if this facility would be able to also hold space for their emergency communications equipment.
Interesting.
Thank you.
Very interesting.
I think we need that with the radios, but, um, so, you're removing two towers, and you're replacing it with one?
Correct.
Okay, and the two towers, are they on the prop, are they on this property? It appears as though they're not.
No, they're on a neighboring parcel. If you look at page two of the staff report, I've clipped an aerial from Suffolk County GIS. The parcel highlighted in green is the project site for the proposed tower, and the two sites highlighted in red are the existing towers. So, there's one on the east side and one on the west side currently.
So, who owns the existing towers?
Crown Castle is the site manager for both of those existing towers.
So, they're privately owned and Crown Castle put a cell tower on it?
So, the towers were originally designed for, one was designed for Sprint, and one was designed for AT&amp;T. What Crown Castle does in the business of the telecommunications industry is they manage many of these sites for the carriers. So, for all intents and purposes, they are the manager and owner of these two sites, so they have the authority to remove these two facilities. We'll provide that documentation to the Town Board, and we're more than willing to accept as a condition of approval that the certificate of occupancy will not be issued until two towers come down.
Okay, so, were the two towers, when were those installed?
The information I don't have in front of me, but I believe one goes back to in the early 2000s.
And was that done with a permit?
I believe so, that these two towers are existing approved uses in the town.
Well, Greg, do they have, do we have anything on those two towers?
I'm sure we do. I don't have that information handy, but I can research the, I can research our files and get back to you to establish when they were constructed.
Yeah, I guess my concern is that you have a lot going on on this property, and the fact that we don't have any site plan or any information on it, and it's zoned APZ, and that, you know, there's a couple cell towers, and you're saying we're going to take down two and we're going to put up one, but I don't even know if the two should have been there to begin with, or if it was put up without the town's knowledge, because I know we've come a long way in, as far as our reviews since I've been on the Town Board, as far as gap studies and things of that nature, in order to allow cell towers, and we have been, we've had quite a few cell tower companies come to us and say they want to put up cell towers, and we've rejected it based on gap studies and things of that nature. So, I want to make sure that we have the legal use as far as the town's requirements in order for these two existing cell towers. I mean, because it sounds great that you're taking down two and you're putting up one, but if the two were put up without the town's knowledge, I think I might have a problem with that.
We can get that information for the Board. I have no problem with providing the legal reasons why those two towers are existing in lawful uses on their properties. But again, the purpose of this project, as you said, was to take those two facilities and consolidate into one, so there is a public benefit for approving this project with respect to the fact that you will now have two towers in the area, and you can reduce that number by one. I think a lot of towns are seeking those types of applications where it will reduce the proliferation of towers in the town, and I think this application achieves that objective.
Okay, I just want more information on the two towers, number one. And number two, in looking at these pictures on page two of the report, figure two, it it appears as though, I don't know, are there buildings on the property?
No, I apologize. So, the picture on, I just want to clarify, the figure two on page two, that's showing the existing access, that's on the neighboring parcel. That's how, when I did a site visit, I was accessed. If you look on figure one, there's that small triangular parcel, which is just to the south. That's where that site is. So, we're not, the impacts to that site, we're not, we're not affecting, I believe that's seventy-seven-two-three. This site plan approval and special permit is not on that parcel. So, that was just for your reference, to see where the access to the site is. So, the conditions of the site, I have spoken with the Town Attorney. Like I said, the clearing and the establishment of that site happened sometime between sixty-two and seventy-eight. The reality of it is, it's kind of in a off-the-beaten-path part of town. There's not a whole lot of activity. There's a lot of heavily wooded areas around, a lot of agriculture, so I mean, you know, did something happen previously on those sites, you know, in the, between sixty-two and seventy-eight, possibly without permits? That's possible. But on the current site, you know, we're not, we're looking at seventy-seven-two-two, not seventy-seven-two-three.
Yeah, I'm looking at cleaning up the old stuff, is what I'm looking at. Because if that's the access road to the existing cell towers, and the dirt is coming out onto the town road, Fresh Pond Avenue, something needs to be done with that. And I'm curious about, you know, there's all these containers, are those containers on the property?
There are some containers, and I mean, again, but that's on a neighboring parcel. It is not on, it's not on the parcel that's under review.
They said they have site control and they manage the neighboring properties where their existing cell tower is, so...
They're different sites. The cell, the existing cell tower sites are not on the seventy-seven-two-three.
I get that. This is the adjoining property, right? That they have site control of?
No, that is, that is seventy-seven-two-three. That parcel has nothing to do with this current application. So, in other, we're looking at Tax Map Number seventy-seven-two-two, which on figure one is the parcel highlighted in green. The figure two is that small triangular parcel. So, that, that seventy-seven-two-three is not under review for this current application. That's a completely separate issue. That would have to be done through some sort of code enforcement action.
They're taking the cell tower down of seventy-seven-two-three, correct?
Incorrect. It is not on seventy-seven-two-three. It is on a neighboring parcel. So, if you, on figure one, on page two, you can see, the green square is where they're proposing the tower. There's a small triangular parcel underneath it, which is not highlighted just because it's not relevant to the application, and the two cell towers are highlighted in red. So, there's, there's no cell tower activity on seventy-seven-two-three, and it's not under review for this site plan or special permit application. And any, any sort of issues with the use of the property on that would need to be handled through some sort of code enforcement action, because that parcel is not under review for this current application.
And the private residence that is, I'm going to say, north, I guess, of the new site is outside the fall zone, correct?
Correct. Yes, I believe it would be, I don't have, I think it's a hundred-and-eighty-six feet. I want to say, I don't have the plans right in front of me, but I believe it's about a hundred-and-eighty-six feet from the tower to that neighboring residence. And it is noted that the tower is designed with a breakpoint at seventy-five feet, which I believe, I don't have the percentages, but seventy-five feet, so a hundred-and-twenty, you'd have a fall radius of like maybe forty-five feet or something like that, from the center of the tower.
That is correct, and that's good memory, correct?
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Are there any kind of health concerns that are ever brought up with removal of cell towers?
For the removal of cell towers? I'm not aware of any health concerns for the removal of cell towers. As I said, there are radio frequency analysis just, which are established by the Federal Communications Commission. I believe Mr. Kenny would probably be more apt to speak to the specifics of that, but there are maximum levels that are established by the FCC, which are considered safe for continuous human exposure. I've reviewed a number of cell tower swap-outs. I've reviewed a number of these applications. I have not seen an application that has risen above ten percent of the maximum permissible exposure levels. As I said, I think this one is six-point-five, six-point-two percent. So, it's, it's well below any established thresholds by the FCC, which are considered safe for human exposure.
Okay, so you mentioned that they didn't comply with the setbacks. Was that something that was done a long time ago? You were talking about a time period where you think they may have been done without permits. How is it that they didn't comply with the setbacks?
Well, so, so let's just clarify. I don't have the information on the two existing towers in front of me, so I can't speak to when they were established. So I can't speak to when they were established, what codes were in place at the time that they were established, or whether they had permits. I mean, I, I would find it honestly hard to believe that the town would permit the construction of two towers without any permits. Even if that was the case hypothetically, in a worst case scenario, they're proposing to remove that. So even if they had some illegally existing towers, this application would remove those. So they would be removing a non-conforming or an unpermitted use.
So they're removing ones-
Can I speak to that? I, I just got recent information from my client. So we do have the building permits that were issued for the two existing towers and we will supply that to the town board. One was issued in nineteen ninety-eight and the other one was issued in nineteen ninety-one. So they likely predated your zoning code section on wireless telecommunications facilities, so they were approved by building permit. But we'll provide that information to the town board in a supplementary filing.
And that's great. Can you email, can we have it emailed to each board member?
Yeah, I guess they'll send it to Greg and he'll-
Yeah, he'll send it to me and I'll route it out to you.
So that would take care of my question about the not having the setbacks?
Well, yeah, so, I can't speak to the existing tower setbacks. What we can speak to is this tower. Basically, the size of the parcel does not permit a hundred and twenty-foot tower to be installed while meeting the hundred percent setback. So meaning, there's no way that this parcel could be configured with a hundred and twenty-foot tower where it would have a hundred and twenty-foot setback. That's why they're going to the Riverhead Zoning Board of Appeals. Zoning Board of Appeals will be included as an involved agency in the secret coordination process. Ultimately, the approval of the application will require that variance. If they are unable to receive that relief from the ZBA, the town board can't act on the project. So that, that's really the, the piece that they need, you know, in order to get special permit or a site plan approval.
I would like to speak on that as well. So the, the application included what is known as a structural design letter, which Greg spoke to earlier, which it has a hinge point in, designed into the facility so that if, in the unlikely scenario that the facility would collapse, it would collapse in on itself and likely only fall within a forty-five-foot fall zone radius. But to make sure that we had the setbacks for the areas we think it's most important to the town, we made sure that the facility was a hundred and twenty feet from the property line that shared with the residential property to the north. And we also made sure that it's a hundred and twenty feet away from the street, the front property line to the street. And the reduced fall zone will show that it won't fall outside of the property lines for the two side lot, for the side lot and rear lot that don't meet the fall zone setback. But we did absolutely make sure that we meet the required setbacks for the property that borders with the residential property and the property line that borders the street. I would also like to submit that the town board has the authority to waive the setback requirements, thereby eliminating the need to go to the zoning board of appeals. And we did respectfully request that waiver as part of our application.
I, just to clarify, Mr. Kenny and the town board, I did speak with our town attorney, Bob Kozakovich. He disagreed. He, when I stated the sections of code and gave it to him and he reviewed it, it was his opinion that they would require relief from the ZBA.
I, I agree and they, they are more appropriately, adjust the situation more appropriately. So they have the expertise and we have a great ZBA and I think we should move it and we'll see how the rest of the board feels. Tim?
I agree.
Yeah, I would not be in favor of waiving. I think it should go to the ZBA. But I have a couple more questions. So you mentioned that the only location where it's visible is ten, but where was ten?
Location ten is the residential area that's approximately a thousand feet north of the facility?
I believe it's a mobile home park on the east side of Fresh Pond Avenue.
Those are the Meadows. Oh. Arthur, I, Greg, he gave, are you looking it up?
Yep. Yeah, so, yeah, I, location number ten is, there is a manufactured home park on the east side of Fresh Pond. Probably-
Can't see it in the area.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I would say it's probably over a half a mile away from the site.
Close, actually. Okay. So you talked about chain link fences, that there's some fences. Is there a landscaping in front of those fences or are the fences visible from the road?
No, so the fence, I mean, if you look by the side, and that's why the best representation I have, I think, is on figure eight on page nine of my staff report. There's a pretty nice tree line along the east side of Fresh Pond Avenue. The site is otherwise really not visible from anywhere. The only place you'd see it would be is if you're driving past it. I mean, if the board feels additional landscaping is appropriate, you know, so be it. But when you drive past the two existing sites, I mean, they've got a small little driveway. You hardly notice them when you drive by. This site plan would propose a twenty-foot clearing just to provide a access driveway. So I mean, you're talking about twenty feet, you know, probably the removal of twenty feet of trees, which would only impact the visual from when you're driving by the site.
Just I know a lot of times when we will have a fence, we'll require landscaping in front of the fence because a lot of times the fence is up there. If there's some place that you really can see it.
Yeah, and you know, this, this board-
A small amount?
Small amount. I mean, based on the amount of traffic that goes down Fresh Pond Avenue, I, I don't think as you're driving by that this is a, you know, scenic vista or anything like that. You really- I wouldn't say that the visual impacts would be significant, but you know, I would put that to the town board if they feel it's appropriate.
And you mentioned that there is some tree clearing. Is that the twenty feet of trees you're talking, referring to? How much tree clearing is there for the entire property?
So there is, again, I believe it's a, I kind of scaled it out myself. It looks like there might be approximately five hundred and twenty-five square feet of clearing. I do have the site plan.
Oh, I want to see that.
The clearing is for access, right? Not for the site itself?
Well, the twenty, the twenty feet of clearing on Fresh Pond would be for the access. There is a, so the, we've got, we've got Fresh Pond Avenue here. This is on the east side. There's a twenty-foot wide proposed access. This area, which is approximately five hundred and twenty-five square feet, would need to be cleared. So this would remain wooded, vegetated. Again, I scaled it out. That was approximately sixty-five to seventy feet. So there'd be an existing densely vegetated buffer on the subject parcel and then there's still an existing densely vegetated buffer on the residential parcel. I believe I said it was, I don't know. I don't have this yet, but I mean, you're probably gonna have like a hundred and thirty feet of vegetation between the fencing.
But this is the most amount of clearing here and there's no way to get around that. They have to clear that. So this proposed access road is on their property?
Yes.
So the existing access road, which is the one I'm really having a problem with. And maybe you guys could help me and make some recommendations of how to clean that up, seeing as you guys have been using it to access the other towers.
No, miss, we, we have not been using that access drive. That, right now, without the clearing for the property we're proposing the facility on, there's no access to that particular parcel, the subject parcel of this application, except for that existing access. So that's only been used to visit the site for inspections and it'll be used until there's an actual accessway cleared for that specific property. This has not been used with connection to the two existing towers. It's not been used by Crown Castle. It's not under their control. It's under the control of that property owner.
Okay, so when it says existing access to site, what site are you talking about?
Again, so I, I can, figure one of my staff report, which is on page two. We need to, we need to just clarify where these parcels are.
I can't see where the property lines are when you're talking about the triangular property to the-
They're, alright, alright. So that-
What's on the site plan if that helps?
I mean, I, I can provide clarified visuals, but the ultimate, the bottom line is that- Counselwoman, I can, I can provide you a clear aerial which shows the property lines and shows the existing access.
That's the private house, right there, right there. This is where the proposed site is. This is the area they're talking about right in here. Now, if you scroll down to the triangular site, that's here. That's to the south. And that's what you're talking about with the access road that, or what you referred to.
This is seventy-seven two-three and the access is kind of right here.
Okay. And how far are they away from the house with the proposed tower?
I believe it said a hundred and eighty-six feet.
Eighty-six, a hundred and eighty-six feet is what he said.
Hundred and eighty-three point six.
Okay.
From the, from the tower to the existing house. Probably, again, so it's probably from the fence line, there's about a hundred and thirty feet.
And does that comply with our town code with the, because I thought that you had to, if it's a hundred and twenty feet tall, then it has to be how far away from the existing-
The property line setback to that, to the neighboring parcel, and that's what Mr. Kenny said, both the street line setback and the residential setback are a hundred and twenty feet. So they do meet the town code requirements on those two frontages. They don't meet it on the rear yard or the side yard.
But I thought it had to be a hundred and ten percent or something. It's been so long since I looked at the wireless code, probably since two thousand and ten. So doesn't it have to be a hundred and ten percent or a hundred and twenty percent of the height of the?
So the wireless code states that the property line setback has to be one hundred percent of the height of the tower, meaning they would need a hundred and twenty feet. That is why they require relief from the zoning board of appeals for the setbacks.
Okay, so it wasn't anything additional? I thought it was more-
Nope, it was just for, just for the setbacks within the wireless code.
Okay. Just for me, anywhere, you're saying there's not a lot of area, Greg, but if there is area where you can see the fence, chain link fences isn't the most attractive thing. I always like landscaping in front of that. That's my opinion. And that was all my questions.
No, Fresh Pond's way up there.
Yeah, it's here. This is Fresh Pond.
Oh, yeah, that's Fresh Pond, yes. Yeah.
Okay, we understand.
Yep.
We got it?
Yep.
Does the board have any other questions?
No, doesn't look like. Thank you again.
Alright, so I'll prepare that type one resolution to start the secret coordination and you'll have that by the Tuesday meeting.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thanks, Greg. Thank you, gentlemen.
Just one statement regarding your request for us to revise the FCC compliance report for the fourth carrier. We can't do that without it being purely speculative because we don't know what the equipment for the fourth carrier will be. Right now, I'm not sure if the board is aware, but there's three main wireless carriers that operate in, in the country. It's T-Mobile, has now merged with Sprint to, to create the new T-Mobile. And then you have AT&amp;T and Verizon Wireless. So that's why the existing carriers on these two facilities are Sprint, AT&amp;T, and Verizon Wireless. So that's why we did the report based on those three carriers. If a fourth carrier comes onto the co-location spot that we've reserved for a fourth carrier, we recommend that the town, as part of the approval of that fourth carrier, whether it be a building permit process, require an FCC compliance report that documents that when that carrier installs the equipment that they're proposing, that the facility will remain in compliance with the FCC compliance reports. This is normally what is done for any kind of modifications to facilities, co-locations to facilities. Because right now, we have the information for the three carriers that are going to be located on this facility, but it would be speculative to guess what the fourth carrier's equipments or needs or usage would be at that, that facility. So we would recommend that when the fourth carrier comes, that at that time, they supply to the appropriate board or reviewing agency an FCC compliance report that shows that the entire facility will remain compliant with the FCC recommendations.
Yeah, so we require permits, right?
So, yeah.
Additional, additional, um-
Carriers.
Additional carriers to go on to the tower. So we would require a building permit for that.
Correct, and, and I would have no objection to Mr. Kenny's suggestion. As you stated, councilwoman, we do, any, anytime additional carriers try to come in or they want to swap out equipment, they do go through an administrative site plan process through the planning board and they are required at that time to provide RF analyses. So, I mean, as I stated, the, the current MPE levels are, it's like six point two-five percent from three carriers. You know, I'm not a radio frequency engineer, but I would be hard pressed to imagine that the addition of one carrier would throw it up to anywhere near, you know, the MPE level. So staff would have no objection. We could make, if the board agrees, they could make that a condition of the special permit approval. It's required by town code anyway, but just to get that extra level of assuredness, if the board's okay with that, we can include that into any approvals.
Yeah, that should be.
Yes, with all agreement. Great, that's it?
Alright, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Greg, you're coming up on, Jeff, you're coming up on?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, you want to introduce the, the, um, the project?
Where was he?
Got home, won't he? Maybe.
Alright.
I don't know who it is.
Unmuted.
Unmuted.
He doesn't have a mic? Alright, can we get him on the phone maybe?
Marty's an expert at this. We had one last night and he ran it really well.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, there he is. Can you hear us now?
Here we go. I can hear you now.
Okay. Well, good morning.
Alright, good morning, everybody. This is similar to the Eastern Wholesale Fence application where we had an existing application that was ready for a public hearing. It was scheduled for back in March and they got subsequently canceled as a result of the COVID. The subject application is known as Forty-Eighth Cromer Avenue. It is located at Forty-Eighth Cromer Avenue. It's an industrial A-zone property. If you know where the existing grill tank car facility is, opening, I think, cars are, the vacant property of the building just located in north of that. This was a Karen Booth application. She submitted, this is perhaps her last twenty-page application staff report. We made a decision Karen. I know we missed her. I'm not sure if we missed the twenty-page staff report.
I liked her long report.
In addition to that, though, she did prepare a two-page summary of the application. So they both dated February tenth of this year. So you both have a, you all have a copy of both of those, the staff report and the summary as well. This application is, was originally proposed as a proposed two-story building with close to forty thousand square feet for industrial office use. A twenty-three-hundred-square-foot office and industrial building for liquid propane storage and office and nine thirty, thirty-thousand-gallon liquid propane tanks. The subject property is located in the WSRR area, while seen as recreation area, DEC. As a result of that, DEC required that they scale the project back significantly. The now, the plan now before us is for a one building, two stories, approximately twenty-six thousand square feet for offices, industrial use. And then thirty percent of the area will be, to the north, will be for needed restoration in accordance with the DEC permit. They're also proposing this, nine thirty-thousand-gallon liquid propane tanks and that requires a special permit from, from this body. Back in, as a result of the scaled back project and then getting the DEC permit, the town board back in February issued a negative declaration for the process and the next step in the process is to schedule a public hearing for August eighteenth at two P.M.
Except we do the special permit and we go to ZBA for the tanks. That would be us, not ZBA?
That, special permit for you, that, that's revised before you. It's a special permit for the propane tanks.
Yeah, they don't need a variance for the tanks.
No. Back in, with the former design, it did require variances, but Marty has submitted revised plans. I haven't reviewed them, but I know that Karen had and based upon that, I do not believe that variances are still required.
Well, it says that they do need a variance for insufficient parking, insufficient loading berths, and insufficient number of street trees.
And they, Marty had, and correct me wrong, Marty, he has submitted revised plans that were reviewed by Karen and I need to confirm that because I don't want based upon, you know, hearsay from Karen. But based upon my discussion with Karen, it would no longer need variances, so I'll double check that based upon the revised plans.
Can you guys know about that then, Jeff?
Marty, there?
Yes, I'm here.
Can you address the, Karen's prior report? She addressed the fact that you needed variances and you revised the plans. Can you just address what revisions remain to the plans?
Absolutely. What had happened was on the previous site plan, I think through our revisions, we were off by, like, two parking spaces and I think we were missing like one street tree. And the loading berths were twelve feet wide. They were not fourteen feet wide. So she listed them that what we had shown on the site plan didn't comply with the dimensional criteria in the code. So she said that we would have to go for variances for those three items. But they were three items that were extremely easily corrected, so we made the corrections. And our plan that we resubmitted, the date of Karen's report was February tenth. Uh, and our plan that we resubmitted, the date of Karen's report was February tenth. And we resubmitted plans on February eighteenth with those changes completed, so we no re-, longer require any variances. Um, the DEC was approved, so we have the DEC approval with that whole side yard being now a third of the property being completely, uh, un-, you know, uh, restored with, uh, vegetation. And, um, uh, in addition to that, basically, we were the first ones canceled. We were actually scheduled for March seventeenth for the special permit hearing. So, uh, this is, um, we're really, uh, half a step past where we were because at the last meeting, uh, we had the items from Karen, but now we've since corrected those and we're ready to go for the, uh, hearing.
And did Karen review the new site plan, Marty?
Yes.
That was February eighteenth.
But she did not, she had not-
Ten, correct.
Prepare a new staff report based upon that.
She had not?
She has not. That's, that's my next step before the public hearing. I'll prepare a revised staff report based upon the revised plans.
Good.
Great.
Does the town require to see any certification of the people who are gonna be running this as a propane, uh, facility? I mean, nine thirty-thousand-gallon tanks is a lot of propane. Do we require to see certification of somebody that, so we know the right people are handling it? Or can somebody just walk in off the street and say, "Yeah, I'm gonna open up a propane company"?
No.
That would be up to the fire marshals to investigate and review as part of their, their, their permits for the facility.
So they would have to show proper permitting and everything else to the fire marshal? Okay.
Yeah, just to clarify that also, uh, the, um, this system, uh, includes a deluge, uh, fire suppression system. That would be submitted and approved by the fire marshal. It's basically a, um, in addition to the building system, this is a system specific to the, uh, propane tank area in accordance with the NFPA code. And we've already had that discussion with the fire marshal and it would be fully approved by them. So it's, it's a, it's a system that suppresses, uh, any, if there were any issue. It's an automatic deluge system that would, um, uh, for safety reasons.
Now, Jeff, with the comments from the fire marshal, that would it be included in the staff report?
It's a revised report.
I mean, I don't see it in the summary one, unless I'm missing it.
That, that was based upon the fire plan, so he's got revised plans, so you all see a new report that addresses all that.
So I don't wanna make any decisions till we see the new staff report.
Well, we're just scheduling a public hearing.
That's all we're doing.
Yep.
For August eighteenth.
Yep.
Okay, anyone else on this? Fine, great. Moving forward, uh, can I have, uh, there are no items for executive session today?
Thanks, Marty.
We're gonna do a submission, right?
Thank you.
Oh, good day. I'm trying to get out of here because I know you have a full day. We're just gonna read the resolutions and then we're gonna close up. Thank you.
Resolution number one, appoints a planning aide. Number two, refund request of special event application fee for Rugged Races LLC, Rugged Maniac Five-K Obstacle Race. Number three, appoints a wastewater treatment plant operator three A. Number four, appoints a wastewater treat plant operator trainee. Appoints a wastewater treatment plant operator trainee, uh, number five, I'm sorry. Number six, appoints wastewater treatment plant operator trainee. Number seven, grants excavation, exportation permit as provided by chapter two twenty-nine to Riverhead Retail Partners LLC.
We, um, I thought there were three plant operators you were looking for. There's four in here.
Joe, one was, uh, another guy that was going to your, uh, last year, who was put on there provisionally. He's since, uh, he, he made the list, and this is taking him from the list that appointed him to a civil service. Did the guy he's already employed?
And Jody, there's no cost for that. It's just a designation?
No, I know, but I'm just wondering if it should read that we're promoting or changing title?
Yeah, we're changing the title.
We already, uh, we already appealed this motion, uh, last year. But this takes him off to the civil service, puts him, appoints him to that position through civil service. The other three are the-
New hires. The three new hires and one, okay. That's it. I just, cause it was a point, a point, a point, a point, four, and I-
Good.
Good.
Okay, number eight, resolution and consent approving the dedication of highways known as Berman Boulevard, Scott Avenue, Janeway, and David Court in the subdivision known as Calvinton Camelot Two. Number nine, accepts resignation-
Do we have a letter in here from the highway superintendent that he's ready to take these roads over?
Uh, that I'm not aware of, but I do know, uh, from the town attorney, he's not here at the moment. But, um, I do know from him that evidently he has a letter from, uh, outside engineer.
Right. Right. So, I just wanna make sure that we have something from the highway superintendent because we should.
Yep.
Okay, we'll have it by, uh, hopefully by tomorrow.
Okay.
Good.
Number nine, accepts resignation. Number ten, promotes a detective. Number eleven, ratifies the promotion of a detective. Number twelve, adopts a local law to amend chapter three oh-one entitled zoning and land development of the code of the town of Riverhead. Number thirteen, order calling for public hearings, Calvinton Sewer District. Number fourteen, extends bid non-, non-pro-tongue for automotive parts. Number fifteen, awards bid for propane fuel twenty-twenty. Number sixteen, rejects bids for installation of groundwater monitoring wells, capital project number four, Riverhead Water District, project number one-eight-zero-four. Number seventeen, awards bid installation of sewer mains and appurtenances to serve one-one-three-three Old Country Road, Riverhead Former Sergeant's Recreation Center and adjacent former Blockbuster Video Facility, Suffolk County Tax Map six hundred, one-zero-eight, four-dash-six-point-four, six-point-six, and seven, Riverhead Sewer District. Number eighteen, Sergeant's Recreational Center Sewer Extension Capital Improvement Project, number eight-one-nine-zero-two, budget adjustment. Number nineteen, authorizes supervisor to execute change order number one, rehabilitation of plant number four, contract M, lime system replacement with Atlantic Wells Inc., Riverhead Water District. Number twenty, authorizes the town clerk to publish and post notice for a public hearing for the special permit application known as Forty-eight Cromer LLC on a parcel located at Forty-eight Cromer Avenue, Riverhead, New York, identified as Suffolk County Tax Map number six hundred, dash one-nineteen, dash one, dash thirty-two, thirty-two point one. Number twenty-one, authorizes the town clerk to publish and post notice for a public hearing for the site plan application known as Eastern Wholesale Fence, Caps Realty Holdings LLC on a parcel located at three oh-one Scott Avenue, Calvinton, New York, also identified as Suffolk County Tax Map number six hundred, dash one-thirty-five, point two, dash one, dash six. Number twenty-two, authorizes town clerk to publish and post a notice of public hearing to consider a proposed local law amending chapter three oh-one entitled zoning and land development. Number twenty-three, Pier Avenue Vault Project, number three oh-one, four-one, closure and return of funds. Number twenty-four, resolution to amend authorization for highway department purchase of bucket trucks set forth in resolution twenty-eighteen dash five-sixty-two, adopted on July seventeen, twenty-eighteen. And number twenty-five, authorize per-
We're pulling twenty-five.
Right. We're gonna, we're gonna table that.
Okay. The, the only question that I had, Michael, is that the public hearing for the sewer district for the additional funds that's needed for the dewatering?
Yeah.
That's scheduled for August fourth. I don't think we have enough time to-
Yeah, I have to get your signatures and, uh, and put it into the paper next week, the twenty-third of July. But I have to get your signatures.
So the twenty-third of July and then August fourth would be eleven days later, so-
Yeah, it's timely, yeah.
Just wanted to check on that.
Missing from here is a notice to publish and post for the, um, car storage area in Industrial A. That was supposed to have been done by Mr. Murfree. I spoke to him when I came in here this morning. Uh, we would like to try to get that on if we could for Tuesday. I don't know what the process would be. Do we have to-
I think we can vote on it now, and as long as we get a, a full consensus, then we can put it up.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't see a problem with getting it up on, for a resolution to schedule the public hearing.
Right, just, just to schedule the public hearing.
And as long as we all agree to put it on at the last minute.
And it's included that structures are permitted?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so are we all in agreement? Then make sure that that goes up?
Sure, I'll speak to Jeff.
Catherine, is that okay with you?
Good.
I'll speak to Jeff, no problem.
Thank you.
Great, uh. Thank you, folks. Are we all done?
Yep.
I think we're finished.
Great, okay. Finally, we have a long day in front of us. There are a lot, a lot of things happening. Uh, hopefully we'll see you here for five-thirty to nine-thirty. We had a live on twenty-five. I'll remember to be there.
For the sewer-
And, uh, and everyone-
Does the volunteer-
Have a safe, uh, weekend. There are no executive session, uh, items today. Can I have a first and a second?
So moved.
Okay, and this meeting, all in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you.